Test, test. We are now live and ready for staff's announcement.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are still waiting for a quorum of the Planning Commission. Hopefully, that'll be here by 6:00. Once we have a quorum, we will go ahead and start the study session items. There are two items for study session tonight. Once we finish the study issues, study session items, I can't talk right now. We will go ahead and get started with the public hearing. That may occur a little bit after 7:00, but the commission will keep you posted. Stay tuned. Thanks.
Good evening. Let's call to order the special planning commission meeting study session of November 24, 2025, at 5:50 p.m. The city doesn't tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. This planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the planning commission agenda. Use the show caption button to view captions on Zoom. Following the study session, the regular planning commission meeting will begin, if possible, at 7:00 or a little later p.m. We encourage the people to stay tuned and participate in the regular meeting. Recording officer, may we please have a roll call? Commissioner Fagone?
Present.
Commissioner Pine?
Present.
Vice Chair Shukla?
Present.
Commissioner Saroney?
Present.
We are for commissioners present. The absences of Chair Iglesias and Commissioner Davis are excused. The absence of Commissioner Segura is unexcused.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, 25-1032. Proposed related applications on a 0.29 acre site, special development permit to allow construction of five townhome-style condominium units, including request to deviate from front setback height, garage size, and the usable open space requirements. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sheila Bagley. I'm the project planner for the proposed project at 1001 South Wolf Road. The project before you is for the construction of a three-story building with five condominium units, which requires approval of a special development permit and a tentative parcel map. The project site is located at a southwest corner of Maria Lane and South Wolf Road. The site is Zoned R3, consistent with the surrounding residential properties shown in yellow on the map. The project site is primarily surrounded by multifamily developments, except for the parcel directly to the west, which is currently developed with a single-family residence. The project site is approximately 12,800 square feet and is currently developed with a single-family home that was built in 1947. The home has been vacant since 2019. The property zoning is R3, which is medium-density residential with a planned development PD overlay. The R3 density range is 18 to 24 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed five units fall within the allowable density for this site. The project proposes five-unit townhome-style condominium building. The average size of the units is approximately 2,300 square feet, and each has a front entry facing Maria Lane. Access to the garages is provided by a single driveway off Maria Lane with four uncovered parking spaces for visitors on site. A common amenity area is located on the west side of the property with seating, a fireplace, and bicycle racks. 29.9% of the site will be landscaped. There are five existing trees, including one protected 14-inch magnolia, and they're all proposed to be removed. Staff supports removal of the protected magnolia tree due to its declining health and its conflict with the proposed driveway. The project will plant 13 new 24-inch box trees, including three new street trees, which will be exceeding the city's replacement requirement. The building is three stories, 38 feet in height. The exterior design features contemporary style with flat roofs, stucco finishes, fiber cement horizontal siding, and defined front porch entries and private balconies for each unit. The streetscape elevation shows how the project fits into the neighborhood context. The project is similar in massing in height to the multifamily development across Maria Lane and maintains generous setbacks from adjacent properties. The applicant is requesting four deviations, which can be considered as part of the special development permit application. One deviation is for front setback. The required 20-foot setback significantly limits the developable area of the land. While front-facing garages could technically be provided to meet this requirement, the applicant's design places garages at the rear to improve streetscape appearance and maintain consistency with nearby development patterns. The second deviation is for height. The project height is 38 feet, where 35 feet maximum is allowed. Additional height is needed to screen rooftop equipment. The third one is usable openness space. The project provides 224 square feet of usable openness space per unit, where 400 minimum is required. Usable openness space has very specific dimensional requirement in the municipal code, such as minimum 12-foot dimensions in all direction, and some limitations for usable openness space in the front yards. Additionally, private balconies also have strict size requirements. They must be at least seven feet in any direction and have minimum area of 80 square feet. Three of the proposed balconies are 98 square feet, but they do not meet the seven-foot minimum dimension, and therefore cannot be counted toward the required usable open space. And the fourth deviation is garage size. City's solid waste design guidelines require 435 square feet garages in multifamily developments to accommodate three 96-gallon bins. The three interior units are proposing to have 429 square-foot garages, but the applicant has demonstrated that they can accommodate the required bins in there. This project may qualify for statutory secua exemption under the new state law that passed recently, AB 130, which applies to housing projects that meet certain criteria, such as being located in urbanized area, which Sunnyvale qualifies for that. The project must be consistent with general plan and zoning, which it is in this case. It's R3 in residential general plan designation. The site must not be in a historic resource or hazardous site and not being near sensitive environmental areas. And this project meets all that requirement. This law also requires tribal consultation. Staff has contacted tribes associated within the Santa Clara County. One tribe has expressed interest in consultation, and staff is working with them to establish an agreement for tribal monitoring during the construction and site preparation. Another requirement is for air filtration for the projects that are between 500 feet of a freeway, which does not apply to this project. This concludes the staff report. Thank you for your attention. Staff is requesting your feedback on the project's design, site planning, and the requested deviations. Thank you.
Thank you. So... Okay. So now I'll ask for questions from my colleagues. And let's see. Yes. Mr. Saroney, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. So walking around the site, I didn't see any signs about this hearing. Were the neighbors notified?
This is not a public hearing. This is for study session. For the public hearing, we will put out the notice board.
Oh, really? Okay. So you don't notify the neighbors or put up a sign for a study session?
We just put it on the agenda online, I believe, but we don't send out the mailers or put out the notice board for the study session.
That's interesting. So there's no inclusionary housing here? So we are not required to grant the waivers or... Okay. The four-foot setback, is that four feet from what? From the sidewalk? It's not four feet from the curb, is it?
It's from the property line. So the setback is measured from the property line, so...
Which is the curb, right?
Which would be the sidewalk, actually. So sidewalk is the right... So sidewalk is the right away.
Okay, okay, yeah. Um, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. Uh, just briefly, uh, I saw in the uh, in the cross-sections that it's a, that we're essentially maintaining the six-foot sidewalk along Wolf. Is that anything that like I know, is that existing city standard? Is there anything in the city standards that would indicate possibly being able to widen that sidewalk at some point? Or would that have to be an entirely different discussion?
That's something that is reviewed by the Public Works Department. And in their reviewing this application, they did not ask for any street dedication from the Wolf side. However, they asked for a street dedication about one foot um along the Maria Lane to widen the sidewalk on Maria Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any questions. So uh, is there an applicant report?
Yes, hi, this is Lance Crenell with S D G Architects and I'd be happy to give a quick little brief on the project. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Again, Lance Crenell with S D G Architects, uh, principal and architect for this project. Uh, first, I want to thank Sheila and her staff uh for the development of this project. Uh, we work with many jurisdictions in Northern California and the city of Sunnyvale is one of the top of the list in terms of our ability to to work seamlessly through these types of projects. And so I want to thank Sheila and her staff for that. Um, Sheila really went through many of the architectural um elements of the project. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Um, I do want to just make mention, and I think it was mentioned in Sheila's presentation, that the the front yard setback reduction was done primarily to minimize the curb cuts onto Maria Lane and to provide rear access alley load garages to enhance the street frontage of uh Maria Lane and uh South Wolf Road. And uh I'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So now I'll, I will now ask for questions from my colleagues. I see um Commissioner Soroni, please.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, the light bollards, uh, uh, are they below the top of the fence? Are they uh, and are they downpointing and bird friendly? In other words, are the, are the lights going to shine into the neighbor's backyard or are they below the fence?
No, they'll all have cutoffs. So the light pollution will only maintain light on the property itself. They'll have some diffuse light, but there will not be any direct light onto any adjacent neighbors.
Okay, thanks. And uh, that uh common property area close to Wolf?
Yep.
Is there a wall or something there? That corner is really noisy, really busy.
Yeah, there's a six-foot fence there. It it will be chamfered for the view triangle that's required based on city standards. Um, but there is a fence to enclose that, that space. And that'll be a six-foot good neighbor fence.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Soroni. Um, the next one is Commissioner Figoni, please.
Yeah, I'm just curious about two things. One is um, the, the property is kind of close to the fire station. So is there materials that are dampening the sound a bit in this, in this uh design? Because it get very loud there with the sirens. And then the second question was, if I could learn a little more about unit five, it says it's an adaptable unit. Just kind of curious what that is.
Yeah, so um, I'll answer the first question first. Uh, the, the sound mitigation for the units will be standard to any building construction. There is no provision for proximity to fire stations relative to noise abatement uh with any municipal code. But the, the state of California does have its own standards that we will be adhering to. So um at certain things like insulation values, S T C ratings for windows, they're all governed by uh the California Building Code and the Green Building Code. In terms of the adaptability for unit five, which is the one nearest a curb cut, cut, that is defined by California, the state of California's uh Building Code for the ability to make changes to the infrastructure of the space, the walls, doors and windows inside to allow for adaptability for people with uh uh any type of ambulatory issues or mobility issues uh within the, within the bedroom, the restrooms or in the closet areas on the first floor.
So you mean the, the layout is more open or it's easier to take a wall down or move it or is that kind of?
Yes and yes.
Okay, and then um, uh, I noticed the stair pattern is different too compared to some other units. Is that intentional? So maybe a wheelchair lift can be installed or?
Um, units one and units five are generally mirrors of themselves. So the end units are mirrors of themselves in general. Um, there could be a rail system installed on the, on the staircase, um, if need be.
Okay. Yeah, very interesting. Uh, thank you.
Yep, you bet, thanks.
Thank you, Figoni, please. I have one question, like I don't see any other question from my fellow members. So um, I have a question. The, the trees you have planted across uh facing the Marina Lane, it's like London plain kind of uh trees. I was just wondering, is it going to be completely um mitigating the view of the other? I mean, the, because right now those buildings are like uh four feet. It's like setback is a little low and then it's going to kind of jut out. So I was wondering that what kind of um uh soft mitigation this tree can provide?
Yeah, those trees are, are uh trees that the, the city of Sunnyvale has approved in terms of their planting palette. And given the distance between the, the five units and the trees, there is a sidewalk there. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that there's a green strip there where the city trees will be. And then there'll be the sidewalk and then there'll be the four-foot um setback to our building. So it, it'll create a nice canopy. Those are not densely leaved trees. They still have some transparency to it, but it's, it, it's meant to soften that, that streetscape there and but still allow a light to come through.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I see no other questions from, sorry, colleagues. I, uh, so I'm going to, um, I will go ahead and open the public comment on this specific item. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, which followed by remote participants. We don't have any brain or any card for the in-person participation. Um, so I will start with the remote participants and the speaker will have three minutes to speak. And. Do, um, does anyone else wants to speak on this item before we hear from the remote speakers? Are you, are you most now? Remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Um, so recording officer, do we have any remote participant wishing to speak on this item?
Meeting, Vice Chair.
Um, thank you. I will clo- close the public comment. Uh, okay, so at this time, we are going to, uh, no, we are not a, yeah, we have, um, oh, so we have the. Do we have extra, oh, do we have comments, um, uh? Okay, so I've, um, I'm asking, anyone have any other comments um on this project from my colleagues? Uh, yes, we do have some comments. So my, uh, Mr. Pine, please.
Thank you. Uh, I just, I'm just to regarding the deviations. I, I, I'm honestly happy with the justifications I've heard for the deviations said on the hearing. I think it's a reason, I think it's a reasonably designed project. I do wish we'd get a little more density. I not, this is not a, this is not targeted at anyone, but like this is not the first project we've seen where essentially we've gotten, where the, essentially the density floor for the zoning was like at, like it was five dot twenty-two here and this is essentially rounded down. And this is, this is consistent with city practice. I'm not trying to, but sometimes I think we should not, we should change city practice, but that's not an issue for the project. That's a, that would be a policy decision. Um, the, but of, and, and this site particular, I, you might have problems trying to squeeze in another unit anyways. That's, I think, but anyway, that's a, that was just something that came through my mind when I was writing calculations. But regarding this project, I think it's well-designed. I regard, the, I think the biggest deviation was justified by not having four extra curb cuts on the site. And I would not want four extra curb cuts onto Maria. That feels like a great way to run somebody over. So I'm quite satisfied with only having the one curb cut and having the deviation. I think there, it is, city policy is to minimize curb cuts and to, and I think it would, and I would much, much prefer to emphasize bicycle and pedestrian safe and vehicular safety on the site rather than um what would be in my mind to be a relatively minor aesthetic gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, um, we have a Commissioner Soroni, but do we have some, uh, we have a recording officer has some question?
Sorry, Vice Chair, I just wanted to note that we have one hand raised, but public comment has concluded.
Um, okay. Um, so next one, Commissioner Soroni, please.
Uh, thanks. Um, just providing some feedback, I, I'm also comfortable with the deviations requested given the shape of the site and uh the limited space. I think it does make sense to uh, uh, do it the way it's proposed. It looks like a good project and uh well-planned, so looks fine to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have um, I have a comment too. I, I think I'm also okay with deviation. And also I think it's a single-family um plot, a family plot and you, we are adding extra for housing. And um the, the look and um look of the houses, I mean, I like it, modern, pretty low-key. And um, so I think I'm okay with all the deviations and the, so great, our good job uh the applicant has done. Thank you.
Thank you.
To uh, to anybody, so, does anyone have any question? So that concludes for this item. And we have the another. We have next item is um, uh, a twenty-five, sorry. Sorry, staff has a comment, sorry. Okay.
I, I think we had a member of the public raise their hands after. Yes. Um, after the public comment was closed, however, they, they can contact Sheila if they have questions after this meeting.
Uh, as a, I'd like to raise a.
Um, maybe I can, uh, if, if anybody, we have some remote person to speak, I can.
Hmm, oh, no, the public comment period has closed, but just a general comment for any public, you know, that have questions about the project. They should just contact the project planner, Sheila.
Can I have the quick? Um, so um, here I'm just going to announce it. If anybody has any project, uh, any question and comments about this project, please contact the project planner. Um, the information is on the sheets and um we are going to move forward for the next item. What did you say? Oh, so, sorry, I, I get it. App, so I know, I'm, I'm, I'm not completely new. I already have done it before, but just because um I was corrected a couple of times before. So I'm kind of a little confused. So the applicant has any comment? They have few minute, three minutes to speak if they want to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. I, I don't have any other comments. I appreciate the feedback and the inputs and I'm encouraged by the comments you guys provided. And uh, we're looking forward to coming back for the formal planning commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So.
Madam Chair?
So now we are going to.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, I would also, uh, would I be, uh, follow-up question? Would I be correct in saying that this will eventually, A, that will, this will eventually come back for a public hearing? And at that point, members of the public will be able to give input directed to the planning commission?
I guess they will.
Thank you. Am I also correct in stating that it, that members of the public can at any time email the planning commission for their comments on, on anything relating to planning commission business?
Yes, they can, or the project planner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Payne, for clarifications. Uh, so we are going to move forward the next item, um, twenty-five dash one zero eight eight. Um, it's a proposed project, uh, application on a twenty-point fifty-five acre site for use permit to demolish six industrial office buildings and construct three twenty-nine, three-story townhomes and detached dwelling units, which includes forty-one accessory dwelling unit. Um, and to subdivide the existing two lots into one fifty-one lots, one seventy-eight condominiums and fifty-three parcels. Uh, the location is five ten dash nine two zero, DeGuein Drive. Um, and zoning is industrial and service. So. Is there an applicant report?
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Um, there's a staff report first. My name is Momo.
I'm sorry, I know that, is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. My name is Momo Ishijima, the project planner for this project at five ten and nine twenty DeGuein Drive. Uh, this project is um at a twenty-point-five acre site. Um, it's for a use permit to demolish six industrial office buildings and construct three hundred seventy units. On hundred fifty-one of the units will be detached single-family homes. On seventy-eight will be three-story townhomes. And forty-one accessory dwelling units will be part of the detached single-family homes. And also, um, they'll, they're seeking a tentative track map, creating uh, con- con- consolidating the two um lots that's there now, the twenty acre, two ten-acre lots and creating um condominium units as well as single-family lots and common parcels. We're also doing an environmental review um for consistency. We're preparing a, an environmental checklist for consistency with the loot, general plan loot E I R. So this um is a aerial view of the site. This is um, this area is roughly on the east side of Sunnyvale, south of one oh one, north of Central Expressway, west of Lawrence Expressway and east of Wolf Road. So more specifically, the site, the two ten-acre sites are bounded by DeGuein Drive on the north and west side. Stewart Drive on the south side. And then you have Swagels Park on the east side and the Irvine um development to the east of there. So right now, um, the two properties are developed with six industrial buildings that were constructed in the nineteen nineties. Uh, the, before that, there was also industrial buildings there, which was occupied by. Uh, the, before that, there was also industrial buildings there, which was occupied by, um. AMD and also, also Western Electricals, and before that it was, um, farmland, orchards. The general plan designation for the site. Is, uh, medium density residential. So as you had seen on the previous slide, which I, I can go back to. This area, it was the, um, industrial to residential. Transition area that had been, um. Designated in the early two thousands, and it's also part of the East Sunnyvale specific plan. So this area called for, um, a transition from industrial uses to residential uses, and as you see on the north side. What was the WAT development that, um, was, uh, approved in two thousand fifteen? And then, uh, east of that and north and east of that was the AMD campus. That, um, redeveloped from industrial. Campus to, uh, multifamily apartments and townhomes. More recently. So the zoning is, uh, currently still MS, but, um. The, uh, the designation of medium density residential allows for twenty four dwelling units per acre. And the project, um. Uh, meets the eighteen dwelling units per acre, the seventy five percent requirement with the proposed project. So it, on this side, it also shows the, uh. The existing square footage of the buildings that are there now. Here is a site plan. So again. The north and west side is bounded by Dequinn Drive, and there are two driveway accesses. Uh, onto the site, and there's a driveway access on the south side onto Stewart Drive. So what you see before you is, um, townhouse, townhomes in purple and light blue. Uh, bounding the eastern property lines. And the west and south. So those are townhomes. And then the light orange and yellow are the single family homes. Excuse me. Sorry, um. So the single family homes, um, with the, or the red star. Includes the forty one, uh, accessory dwelling units. So those are the homes that will include the ADUs as on the base, uh, ground floor. And they're distributed throughout the development. Uh, there's about five hundred, um. Trees, five hundred eighty trees that were reviewed on site. About sixty of them are street trees that will be, um. Removed, um, and then the rest of the trees, um. Because of the development on site will probably most likely lose most of it. Um, but the, um. The application, um, applicant as part of the East Sunnyvale. Um, sense of place plan requires, um, a connection to be implemented. A multi-use pedestrian path along the east side of the project, so that will connect Stewart Drive. To, uh, Swagles Park. And that area that's green to the north is not a, an expansion of the park. Um, it's a, this happens to be the lower point on the property, and that will be a, a storm retention area. But, um, the applicant has some ideas, um, for that site, so which they'll share with you in their, um. Slide presentation. Um, there are about, um, seven hundred sixty seven parking spaces that are being proposed. Which exceeds the state density bonus parking. Uh, they, um, meet the state density bonus, um. Requirement by providing fifteen percent below market rate units, which is about forty nine units and some fraction. But they exceed the parking. Um, most of the homes will provide two parking spaces except. Eighteen units, which are sing, two, eighteen units, which are two bedrooms. This is with the townhomes. Will provide one. And then eleven. Single family homes that are five bedrooms provide three parking spaces. And then they have a hundred sixteen, um, unassigned parking spaces so far. This is a streetscape image at the corner, Dequinn and Stewart Drive for the three story, uh, townhouse units. And this is an interior, um, image showing the single family homes. So they are detached, but they're. Somewhat close together compared to typical single family homes. So again, they're providing forty nine below market rate units, which, um. Complies with the city's inclusionary below market rate, um, program. These are all, uh, ownership units that are being proposed. And also due to the state density bonus law, the applicant's entitled to one concession or incentive. And any number of waivers or reduction to development standards. So. The following slides are kind of summaries of concessions and waivers that they're requesting. One of the concession is the, um, this is a prohibited material in our objective design standards. It's a exterior insulation finish system. That they're requiring a concession for to be able to utilize that material. Um, and then the other. Others are waivers that they're requesting to development standards. So minimum lot area, because these are small lots. Um, our standard R three requires a eight thousand square foot lot size, but these are closer together, and they range. From a thousand six hundred seventeen square feet to two thousand eight hundred fifty five square feet. Um, maximum building height. Is thirty five feet, and they're requi- requesting or proposing forty five. Minimum front yard setback. So most of the setback along the street frontage, um. Meets the fifteen foot requirement, but the interior lots will not meet the, uh, front setback requirement. Um, the, uh. There's a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is actually not correct. I'm sorry, this is, um, a slide that's from a different project, so I'm just skipping that. Um, the minimum average front yard setback is twenty feet, and for the interior, single family lots are at three point five feet. Um, and minimum side yard setback. Um, is a twelve foot setback requirement for a three story home, and, um. They're closer together, so they're at three point seven five feet. A minimum total side yards, and we have a. Total side yard, um, which is fifteen feet. They're proposing eight feet and a minimum rear yard setback of. Twenty six feet for a three story home, and some of the units will be, uh, about two feet. And then the distance between buildings, we have a requirement of twenty six feet, and they range from seven and a half feet to twenty five feet. Um, and then from the, a number of these are. From the objective design standards for open space amenities, there's a table of requirements that meet, um. Requires you to meet fifty points, and they meet twenty points. Minimum ground floor plate height, um, there's a fourteen foot requirement, and they're proposing eight to nine feet. Uh, trees and common open space, one per three hundred square feet. Which, uh, they are currently not meeting, and I think they are proposing to pay in lieu fee for that. And, uh, required frontage at minimum front yard setback, sixty five to eighty five percent of the buildings need to be at fifteen foot setback, and they're. Cannot meet that standard. Uh, maximum building setback from minimum front yard setback, ten to fifteen feet front yard setback. There are a couple of buildings for the multifamily units that, um. Are at more than twenty five feet. So this is in objective design standards, they want these buildings to be closer to the, uh. The front yard, which, um. They, they're not meeting that. Um, and then there's a recess of minimum two inch recess for windows and glass. They're not able to meet that. Um, common open space, external accessibility, and there's a table in the objective design standards to meet a hundred twenty points. They're proposing to meet eighty. The lot width standards, again, they, because they're small lots, they're not able to meet the, um. The larger lot requirement with requirements. Mechanical equipment, they need to meet the side yard setback if over eighteen inches in height, and they are. Proposing to not be able to meet that because of the reduced side yard setback. Vehicle access to garage. So typically there would be like a twenty foot, um, driveway length. For single family homes, and, uh, they're not able to meet that. The access will be right off of the, um, private drive. Private open space access restriction. So there's a standard and objective sound guidelines for the ground floor private open space to not have unsecured direct access to the exterior. They're not able to meet that. Okay, so that was, um, a list of the concessions and waivers. We did have a community outreach meeting last week. We had a very, um. Strong turnout at the meeting. Over forty participants participated. And some of the concerns that were raised was the traffic. So, um. They noted that, um, with the road diet that happened on Duane, there is a installation of, uh. With, uh, bicycle lanes that made it from two lanes going both ways to one lane. Um, and a lot of people use Dequinn as a kind of a cut through, I believe. Um, so, and then also because of the, um, Dequinn has a, a turn. Throughout, you know, through the frontage of the site, um. They felt that there's some blind curbs. Especially for the property, um, the development that's across the, to the north, the WAT development. Um, as they are exiting the site, they feel like there's a blind curb as they're leaving. And there's also parking on the north side of, uh, Dequinn. So, um, they were. Requesting, um. Some traffic, uh, slowdown measures to be implemented. Also, there's only one stop sign at the, uh, three way stop at Dequinn and Santa. I forgot the name of the street, but it's right in front of Swagles Park. So that was something that they also highlighted. And, um. There's. Definitely, um, a concern related to not specifically. Uh, well. Commercial retail to be included into this project because of concerns related to the development on Duane. Um, which is the shopping center, Village Center site, and also, I think, in the Lakewood area. So, um, there is a strong interest from the community to be able to have a walkability and accessibility. For the existing residents as well as the future residents of the project. And to consider including commercial retail. Um, parking was an issue, uh, that came up. They felt that there wasn't sufficient parking provided for the site. And then there's some concerns related to the noise and construction timeframe. Um, groundwater contamination, so the, uh. There's, um, that which is being looked at right now. Um, the applicant's working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board on a soil mitigation plan. So that is being included into our environmental review. Uh, there's also some support for the project. There are plenty of, um, participants at the meeting that. Was interested in both, um, purchasing in the future as well as in the BMR program. So they wanted to know more about that. Um, there, we received, uh, like seven. Uh, email correspondences from neighbors which had. A list of, uh, concerns that I also highlighted in this, or summarized in this slide. That, that have been shared with the planning commissioners before the meeting. Um. And then the feedback we're requesting is, um. Project designing and site planning, design details, concessions and waivers requested. And, um, the applicant is here, the applicant team is here today to, um, also share their presentation. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Excellent. Uh, we will have, um, now I'll have some questions from my colleagues. To the staff, and we start with, uh, Commissioner Payne, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh. Few questions. Uh, first one, uh, regarding the. Regarding the concession, uh, why, and. If you don't have this offhand, that doesn't need to be tonight. It can be when it comes back for public hearing, but, uh. Why was this specific, you said it was because, it was, uh, the requesting concession because, from a specific material prohibition? Why was that material prohibited in the multifamily design guidelines?
I don't have, um, a direct answer to that, but, um, perhaps, um. The applicant's architect who's present here today could, um, share some. Uh. Points that he can share related to the material.
Okay, yeah, again, that doesn't need to be a question for, does, I don't need an answer to that tonight. I do need an answer when it comes back for. Public hearing, because like my basic concern, I'll just get this out there. My basic concern is, did we pro- because. And I can go and look up when we approve the multifamily design guidelines myself, but like. My ba- basic concern is if it's. Because we thought it like, we thought it looked ugly or something, that's one thing. If we thought it was like an actual health and safety hazard, that would be an entirely different thing. So I want to make sure that. So that's just the kind of thing I'm looking for, because. I want to make sure we're granting the concession based on something that's actually reasonable to grant and would not risk actually doing harm.
My guess is that it has to do with the aesthetics.
Yeah, that would be, that would be my guess, but, which is, and again, we don't have to, again, we don't have to do that tonight. I just. That, that would be my inclination, but that's something I would want to know for sure one way or the other. At, at the public hearing. Uh, the other. Uh, the, uh, next question, uh. Well. Actually, that's, I'll bring that back later. That's not, that's not a question for tonight. Uh. The other kind of big question I had, and this was based on the public comment we received, uh. What? What ki- this is. Heard the general plan, this is medium residential density. What kind of commercial uses would even be permitted here without. Requiring to go back for like a general plan amendment, or I think a specific plan amendment in this case?
So the general plan is not like a mixed use, um, designation. It is a purely residential designation. However, we're right in this. Interesting, um, situation where the zoning is still MS. So the, under the MS zoning, a retail or commercial type of use could be allowed with a, um, staff level, or actually with a use permit. Um, as well. So, um. However, you know, um, I think the vision of the general plan is for residential use to be, um. What the existing use needs to transition to.
Yes, I, I'm thoroughly. Down with that as a statement of existing policy. I just wanted to kind of set a baseline for tonight's discussion of basically is of. Are people, of, are we getting public requests for something that's just completely impossible without it taking like three years to turn around a specific plan amendment? without it taking like three years to turn around a specific plan amendment, general, a GPA or an SPA? Or is it something that possibly could happen? And or just, I just kind of wanted to get that out there as a baseline for tonight's discussion. I'd also note to for the benefit of members of the public that this would be that under state housing law, the planning commission would not, well, A, under state housing law, this the planning commission would not be able to require that kind of a commercial function in this space, but also under frankly, even if it wasn't under state housing law, I would I would be loath to saying that a purely a pure, a, well, it's not technically zone, but a general plan designated residential that isn't mixed uses mandated. But I'm, on the other hand, I'm also broadly sympathetic to all of the issues that have come up with the adjacent Village Center. So I'm just, I'm just gonna throw that one out there at the beginning of the conversation. That being said, obviously, if applicant has any really cool ideas that everybody is gonna love, I am always, always down to hear that. That is all I had for now, but I will just flag that I have quite a few things that I am going to have for comment that are on the end, that are in the category of this is not a question I want answered tonight, but is a question I want answered for the public hearing, so just foreshadowing that, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Serrani, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let's see, so I just want to clarify the the parking. And thanks for the presentation, the the that the parking, and this was covered in the presentation, but that under the, you know, state, the density bonus, that six hundred fifty two parking spaces are required and they are providing seven hundred and sixty seven. And note that there is no parking required for the forty one ADUs.
That's correct, Commissioner Serrani. The state density bonus requirement is six hundred fifty two, and they are providing seven hundred sixty seven parking spaces.
And and thanks for clarifying that that right now there's nothing in the zoning that would prevent retail from being developed, but you know, that that would be up to the developer. Did I understand you to say that they requested now setbacks, at least on some of the units, at three point five feet in front and two feet in back?
Yeah, these are for the interior lots, not for the homes that are facing the street, but.
Right, so we have some units are four feet back to back?
Three point five plus three point five, so it's more like seven feet side to side and then in the back.
If it's two feet, then two feet, it's four feet, right?
Yeah, not all the units would be requesting the same waiver, I think.
Right.
I think it really depends on where it's located.
That's not considered a fire hazard or anything?
Yeah, I I'd have to take a look at each unit, but I don't believe there's one that's requesting both the front and rear setback deviation.
On the waivers, there this is kind of an evolving thing as we see more of these, but the there really is no justification of any kind for most of these, it just says we can't meet it. We don't require any justification for a waiver?
It's not part of the state density bonus requirement. However, I have requested the applicant to see if they can provide exhibits before the public hearing.
All right, and I'll just observe that it seems like no one can meet the window and glass recess requirements anymore. Regarding the, I had the same question about the external, the exterior insulation finish system. And and my understanding was it was banned because it has a history of leaks if installed improperly. And I had the same question, is this a health and safety issue? So maybe the.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the applicant's architect to expand on it, thank you.
All right, oh, and I wanted to disclose that I did talk to the applicant last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrani. Yeah, you know, I have a question about about the size of this single family home development. Do we have any type of, or you have come across any projects where we have such a small houses in Sunnyvale? Like as a plot lot develop, like so small, single family lot?
Yes, we have the dinner school site, which is near Washington Park, but they're not three stories. I believe there's two stories, they're all, they're all smaller single lots, but not.
And do we have the same municipal code for them too, like for setbacks and all other requirements?
So I'm not exactly sure, for that school site, it was a planned development, so they could ask for deviations from, you know, development standards, I'd have to take a look at what exactly they had adjustments for. But we do have them, we do have some sites that specifically they were typically zoned in development, then they could go through a special development permit. But these happened, you know, before the state density bonus law came into place, so.
Somehow I feel that it's like what we have those trailer homes, like motorhomes. I mean, it's like somehow it feels that it's just you own this land because they will be selling this, correct? Like these are the the lot divisions, single family homes, so that will be sold to individual.
That's correct, yeah.
So it will be more like a trailer home, but like own land, I would assume. Maybe I'll ask the applicant about, because I can't see how it will look to, I mean, I I can visualize how it will look, but it's kind of completely different form of development. So I thought maybe we have anything in Sunnyvale. But I, okay, but that's my just general question, but that's about it. But thank you for the presentation and let's see, we have, we, so now we are going to have applicant's report, so is there an applicant report?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm sorry, I'll try and lean here to be clear. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Kyle Winkler, I work for a group called Tidewater Capital. I'm on, I'm here representing the project applicant of our, I think I got it, Momo, the what we're calling Sunnyvale Park Place Residential Entitlement. Real quick, a little bit about Tidewater. We're a local Bay Area investor and developer, we're a little over ten years old, based in San Francisco. If you can see on the map, there's a little yellow dot at the very bottom. We're thrilled to be making our first investment in the South Bay, especially here in Sunnyvale. With that said, we have a lot of history in the Bay Area, we've entitled and developed multifamily building in San Francisco, recently received approvals for two separate entitlements in the city of Oakland. We entitled and developed the Moxie Hotel in Oakland. And we also own and manage a little over three million square feet of real estate in the area. Also want to acknowledge that I'm joined here by our home building partner, Lennar, also with our architect from W H A, and I believe we should be remotely joined by both our landscape designer and from Environmental Foresight and a representative from C B G from Representative Civil Engineer. A little bit about the site location and land use, so the site is located in north or east Sunnyvale, depending who you talk to. It's bound and bounded by Stewart Drive and DeGyn Drive, surrounded mostly by a mixture of residential, really kind of a similar type of out typology of three story townhomes to the north, lower, and then stepping up the higher density apartments to the east. And then also to the south, kind of the similar R and D office buildings that exist today. We are, the general plan designation is the medium density residential, that's really where we've been taking our our vision from to to implement this design. That was really born out of the East Sunnyvale and industrial residential future study in the late nineties. And then ultimately, the subsequent land use designation was changed to medium density residential as a as a consequence of that. And throughout this whole process and based on some some literature that was published by the city prior to our acquisition, we've really been following the R three zoning here, so really trying to follow the general plan, medium density residential and the R three zoning to inform the layout of the site. Just some imagery here to to kind of contextualize with with the site, looking at kind of the existing parking lots, existing buildings, as well as some of the neighboring uses. So don't want to spend too much time here, but something that we could come back and reference if you choose. Speaking to our timeline, we completed two separate acquisitions here that ended in September of twenty twenty four and subsequently submitted a pre-application October twenty four. And similar to the previous applicant, also want to acknowledge the city of Sunnyvale planning staff. This has been an incredibly efficient and rigid process that they followed here. It's something that should be followed beyond and just want to acknowledge the great job that they're doing here. This has resulted in us being here today at our study session. And then also, as Momo mentioned, we did hold a community meeting last week in advance of this hearing. We're hopeful to return to you in early twenty twenty six, seeking your approval of the development application, in which case we would enter into about a year of engineering and permitting processes and then approximately eighteen months of construction for the development. So just want to give you an idea of kind of where we've been and where we want to go from a timeline. So speaking of the site layout and some of the design features, Adam's gonna come up here and speak a little bit more about the design, but I just wanted to highlight some of the design features. We have designed four distinct product types, attached and detached townhomes, also with additional ADUs and some of the detached product. And this has really been informed by a deep knowledge base and market research of what the market is calling for and the demand is with tremendous amount of knowledge from our home building partner here. So we've really done this in conjunction with them. The intent is not to seek approvals and then go out and try and modify these afterwards. This is really tailor made to be developed in the very near term. It will be an all electric development, there will be solar, and then the garages will be E V ready. So we'll be following all the Sunnyvale municipal codes as it relates to that. As Momo mentioned, we are introducing a multi-use path along the east property line. This is about a ten foot wide path for pedestrian and bicycles, that's per the vision of the East Sunny, East Sunnyvale Sunset Place Plan. And then we'll also have a community clubhouse and pool, and then we'll speak a little bit later about the relocation of public art. And with that said, I want to turn it over to Adam from W H A to speak a little bit more about the design.
Good evening, my name's Adam Gardner, an architect with W H A in San Ramon. Happy to be here tonight to share some of the design features about the architecture. We've been active in projects all over the peninsula and always happy to be here in Sunnyvale. One of the first things I just kind of want to reiterate is just the idea of the architecture being diverse and providing a product type, typologies is the term we use, to provide four different types of buildings that are spread throughout the site. And we're calling them villages, they're essentially neighborhoods within the neighborhood. So it's made up of three hundred twenty nine homes, forty one ADUs, for a total of three hundred seventy units. The two villages that compose a single family are kind of clustered towards the north of the site and the middle of the site. And they are then surrounded by the townhomes, which are on the southwest and east sides of the site. So it's kind of a nice transition from the more commercial projects to the south that are existing to the existing similar three story townhomes and apartment buildings to the north, east and west. One thing maybe to think about with these single family homes, because it's maybe a little bit of a new product type for Sunnyvale that you're not that familiar with, although we've done a lot of these lately. You can almost consider them detached townhomes. They are rather close together, they meet all the building code separations. They provide homeowners with an actual single family home, which has all the advantages of sound, noise, privacy, insurance, HOA, all those things that people are looking for with a single family home. But they're close together, and that helps us meet the density. Another kind of big picture thing to think about, I believe it's important, is that in order to meet the density that we are achieving, we are asking for quite a few waivers throughout this process, and that's pretty typical now. Objective design standards have been developed for most cities, taken into consideration a lot of design character. However, sometimes when density is imposed on a site, there are certain things that just can't be done. And it's often height setbacks, things like that, and and the justifications that we'll come up with for the public hearing will kind of outline that. But generally speaking, it allows us to design a quality project that respects neighborhoods, provides the the future residents with a pleasant, comfortable, safe place to live, but does require some deviations. It was mentioned that sometimes projects in the older way of designing through P U D projects essentially did the same thing, except for what was called the P U D, Planned Unit Development. So you take those design standards that are outlined in the city and you design a project that would have all the advantages of a good design quality project, but would require or request some deviations. And it's kind of similar types of deviations, usually it's setbacks, it's coverage, it's a little more detailed with some of these objective design standards, where they're talking about actual design planes of buildings, the two inch recess window, those kinds of things. And and another reason that waivers are sometimes requested is frankly because of cost. Sometimes cost is prohibitive to meet this type of density. So our builder clients and as architects, we're always looking at efficient ways to design quality projects that may not meet the letter of the law, so the waivers are something that we ask for. In addition to the site circulation that was described, you'll notice on this slide that there are some different color pathways. There's pedestrian paths of travel throughout the project on both the northeast and west sides. And there's also vehicular paths of travel. The idea is to separate those two through green belts and walkways for safe passes throughout the site. Getting into the architecture itself, we have a mix of elevation styles, we're talking about the exterior elevation, I'm sorry, want me to wrap up pretty soon? Okay, sorry. Oh, I'm going over?
Three, two seconds.
Yeah, I see, okay.
You you are time, you have five minutes to speak, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
So we'll have some questions and that time you can answer it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can probably stay. Okay, so I'll have a question from my commissioner, fellow commissioners to applicant. Let's have Commissioner Pine, please.
Thank you, I have several questions. First was regarding, can you discuss the choices that were made with the plant palette? Because I have some concerns, but I wanted to give you a chance to just answer that one first.
Yeah, is Kevin from Environmental Foresight available to speak on that? I mean, we've taken a lot of guidance from the East Sunnyvale Sunset Place Plan, but I think there's some probably some additional context that he could provide.
I'm here, can you hear me?
A little bit tough to hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? My name's Kevin Brontow with Environmental Foresight, as I was saying with the landscape architects, and I can speak on the plant palette. We are having, you know, a mix of native plants. We do have, you know, climate adaptive Mediterranean plants that work at Sunnyvale. And we try to mix in more species, the more species, the better for diversity, for for the wildlife, for the flora and fauna. Of course, our plant material for the fire retention base. Of course, our plant material for the bio retention basins, we want to make those aesthetically pleasing because they're, they're large features. So we have a diversity of plants and bio retention. And of course, those will be from the, the required list from the Santa Clara Valley water treatment requirements.
Thank you. My, my one comment is that, oh, my, my view is always if we can try to find more ways to mix a native species, that's always appreciated, especially for a project like this where we're cutting down a bunch of healthy coast redwoods, which always makes me sad, just that's always just, so just gonna throw that one out there. The what, regarding that, so regarding the circulation, is there, are there any like visualizations or anything that can kind of indicate what that, what some of the pedestrian entryways look like at the street level, like because there's a bunch of like, and to be clear, I, I liked how it's set up. I like the, I like trying to de-conflict the pedestrian vehicular access as much as possible. But I, I was just kind of trying to visualize, like if I'm walking on like Stewart driver to Gwin, what does this kind of look like?
Yeah, I think we had one of the renderings included in the presentation and I think there's some in your package. There's one rendering taken from what I believe is the corner of DeGween and Stewart that would illustrate that. And I think we could, if it was helpful, we could try to do a better elevation, zoomed in elevation or rendering in the future planning commission hearing to help further illustrate that.
Thank you. Also, what was kind of the vision for bicycle circulation? Because I know I, because obviously that'll be possible on the mixed use path, but like just, like, just what was the, like, is it kind of envision that they'd be use, that they'd be using the kind of narrower pedestrian paths or just kind of using the streets or?
I think internally, yeah, I think it would be more of the streets. And then, yeah, there would be the east multi-use path as well. And then also I believe there's a bike path fronting our property along DeGween as well.
Yeah, I was just mostly thinking about kind of the internal circulation because people, that's a it's a large area, it's relatively large area and people want to be biking in there, especially if they're biking to elsewhere. That was, that was all I had in terms of questions. I have some comments I'll save for afterwards. Thank you.
Our next one is Commissioner Serroni, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The, can you address the question about the EIFS? Is, you know, you, if the issue is history of leaks, if installed improperly, do you feel like you have a crew that can install them properly and there isn't an issue or all these units going to leak?
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I think where that was born off of was just a real negative connotation with EIFS acronym. It's kind of a four letter word, no pun, but I started my career in construction and that was right around the time when there was a tremendous amount of failures and litigation around EFS systems. I think that technology has improved dramatically in the last 10 years. And I think maybe when, this is me just guessing, that maybe when the objective design standards, maybe that just wasn't taken into consideration. I would say we're incredibly risk adverse people. We don't like, we would never develop a project that we thought was going to leak. That would be a horrible idea. And one of the really nice benefits of EFS is that you can't really tell the difference between EFS and a stucco system, but what you do get is you get a, an external insulation value, which really helps you meet all the stringent green building codes that are being developed. So it's a really powerful way to meet green building standards, but also offer that stucco look.
Okay, thanks. On the minimum active ground floor, active use area, the requirement is 6,900 square feet, proposed is 2,000. Is this the clubhouse?
Um, so that slide was erroneously included in this presentation and doesn't apply to this project. That the three waivers that are listed there, that whole slide does not apply.
Okay. Was there, is there a missing slide that relates to this project?
I don't believe so. Sorry. It was our mistake to include that.
All right. For, well, let me, on some of the row townhouses, it looks like you, which is typically, you can't get out of the garage without going upstairs. Some of them have bedroom and bath on that level, some do not. Just wondering about that in terms of accessibility, is that an issue?
Thank you for the question about accessibility. When we're doing a townhome project, or actually any project over three or four units, the state requires what's called an adaptable unit. Briefly discussed in the last presentation for a previous project. A minimum of 10% of the units have to have a adaptable space. And it can be as little as a powder room on that ground floor. So when you see some of the units with and some without, it's about design. It's about diversity within the plans. So we meet that requirement by having at least 10% of our multifamily units having this space at the ground floor that's adaptable. And again, it's a, a powder room, it's a bedroom, it's closet space. It's also access from the garage and from the outside. So it's a, a way to provide a feature for mobility impaired people that need access to that, those kinds of spaces.
I would, I'd also add that I've been a casual observer of some of the universal design principles that you guys are looking to have city council study. And I think there's some principles that we might be able to implement here. We see the value also in just having that ground floor bedroom and bathroom for, you know, the potential to even age in place. And even the ADUs offer a lot of value there as well. I think 75% of our units have a ground floor bedroom and bathroom. But yeah, we just want to take some cues too as well from potentially some of that universal design principles you guys are introducing as well.
Okay. And if I can add one more quick note, new state law does require universal design features for residential, whether it be on the ground floor or the second floor. So it's a different type of accessibility. So you might actually have spaces on the second floor, even though there's no elevator, that have larger doors, wider hallways, larger openings. And those are incorporated in each of the plans.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
This project is very close to a flood zone. Has that been taken into consideration? Is that an issue? I know the water table is very high in this area. Like these bio retention drains are sitting right on the water table, right? Is there any concern that that water will back up and create a problem?
We, we haven't identified any issues with the flood plain to answer your first question. We believe the water table is at approximately six or seven feet from our site investigations. We've taken that into account with some of our site management plan with the water board. But we have not, with our civil engineer, they haven't raised an issue with the, the level of the bio retention replanters in relation to the groundwater table.
Okay, yeah, I asked because I, I used to work a, maybe a half a block from there. And there was a, an underground pump pumping out the water. And if that failed, then the area did flood. And I guess maybe this is a question for staff, but will there be a, there were a lot of questions of the public about traffic. Is there, will there be a traffic study related to this project?
So the, the direction from the, our traffic division was that because of the, the way that we measure traffic in terms of VMT analysis instead of LOS analysis, there was no need for this site to include a traffic analysis as part of the development. However, since we had the community meeting last week, the applicant and staff have discussed some of the points that were raised at the community meeting with our traffic division staff. And they are considering some measures to be included in potentially as part of the project. Some of the details will have to come out later because, but I just wanted to mention that we have had conversation as part of the outcome of the community meeting.
So are you saying they are going to look at the traffic or?
Not so much a traffic analysis, but some of the concerns that were raised about DeGuin and stop signs and possibly some other slowdown measures of traffic are things that they are considering. And maybe Kyle, you can also speak to others.
Yeah, I would just note that we had a productive call with the traffic department actually earlier today, which was scheduled after what we heard during our community meeting. I think the takeaway there was there's a real fine line of what an applicant can propose on public property. And, but there is, there may be a potential, we heard some requests for speed bumps at the community meeting or signage. Sounds like that might be a possibility, which we'd be supportive of. But there's a lot that really quickly get into a council territory of decision making and policymaking that we may not have control over through this process. And then I think the other thing that was telling that we heard from the traffic engineers, they were estimating that with the change of use from office to this residential, they were actually estimating a reduction of about 1,400 daily trips for the project. So that was informative from what I heard from the traffic department earlier today.
Okay, yeah, that's interesting. So VMT, right, is measuring vehicle miles traveled and it's a, it's measuring the impact of, you know, vehicle miles on the, on the city at large and which impacts greenhouse gases and some other things. LOS is, is which, you know, we moved away from, but it, but it looks more specifically at congestion at a particular node, a traffic node, as opposed to just generally. And granted that the more housing we have, the less closer to work, which we have a lot of work here, a lot of jobs here, does reduce the, the overall traffic. But there's certainly a potential in a particular location for more traffic in that specific, you know, traffic jams essentially in that specific spot. So it seems like that would be worth looking at from that standpoint. For example, anybody who lives by a school, there are, there are times of the day when there's a lot of congestion because of the people picking up students or dropping them off. So and, you know, if some kind of traffic calming is needed, it would be nice to know that before it creates a problem for residents. But all right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Serroni. I have a question before we open up for people, public. I mean, you are saying it's a Sunnyvale Park place. It's a sense of place you are creating with very creative approach, with a completely different products of combinations of different types of houses. Now, my question is that when you, you have many entrances to the complex and also you have street names. So they're so, I mean, is there any other way to make it more creative? Because N Street, N Street, instead of like giving some name, something which can be more kind of identifiable for the residents, for the visitors. So like gates where they are coming from different side, something. And also the street names can have some, some meaning to it because it's almost like a mini city you are creating. So maybe if you can give thoughts to add and some lighting to like, you know, that would be nice. Because I, I really like this, the whole thing. But I think just please go all the way in rather than just getting the permit. But that's my, my just, I don't know, it's not a question, but I could have waited for comments, but I'll have it later. But these are mine.
Chair Shukla, just, there's no one clarification. We do have a whole street naming convention. So right now it's just generic on what they, they put on the street name. But there's a whole convention that we, we have to follow. So just wanted to let you know that.
So do we have, we have the conventions like specially like guidelines for the street name convention?
We'll work that out a little bit later, once they get closer to doing their map.
Okay, because I, I would love like, you know, when we go to like orchard, like the fruit trees or all something, you know, like the tree's name or, so if they can give some, like they have given names Sunnywell Park Place. So maybe you can, they can like invent something, it'll be nice, creepy creative. Because the, the architects have, I mean, I like all the products they've used and all. So I would just suggesting them to give a little deeper thoughts on it.
Yeah, we can probably present that information when we bring it forward to public hearing, just to give you an idea of
Before they come to public hearings.
Give you an idea of what the range would be.
Okay.
All right.
That would be nice. I'm going to, my comments are okay, my questions, sorry, not the comment. Now I'll go ahead and open the public comment on the specific item. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members on the public participating in person first, followed by remote participant. Speakers will have two minutes to speak. So we have in here, we have, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to refrain. We have only one person, so I'm going to have three minutes to speak. So we have Mr. Himanshu Sethi, please, you can come forward.
Sorry, one second. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Himanshu Sethi and I'm speaking on item B two. And I want to focus on the importance of including community serving retail, either on this site or on a nearby property through meaningful incentives. So, but Sunnyvale has taken on the thousands, taken on thousands of new homes over the past decade. Yet the neighborhood has not gained any new retail or essential services. Residents still have to travel long distances for groceries, dealing necessities or simple conveniences. And that's going to become worse with, when ferrocks goes away. And approving another project with zero retail will deepen an already serious gap and leave thousands of families without walkable access to the basic services that we need. So this runs directly against the city's own goals of creating sustainable, complete and walkable neighborhoods. So the Tidewater has noted that the East Sunnyvale Sense of Place Plan does not require retail. But that plan is more than 10 years old and was created for a very, very different Sunnyvale. It does not reflect the density, the demographics or the needs of today's North Sunnyville community. And so we also have to consider the larger context. Sunnyvale was just selected as a site for a major CHIPS advanced manufacturing research facility as well. So this is a significant regional investment that will bring a highly skilled workforce specializing in semiconductors, AI and advanced computing. So these workers will have the income and the flexibility to live anywhere in the Bay Area. If North Sunnyville wants to attract them and retain their talent, the neighborhood needs walkable amenities, food options and basic retail that make it competitive with other communities. So retail is not just a convenience for existing residents. It is also an economic asset that helps North Sunnyville remain attractive in a rapidly changing regions. So I, for all these reasons, I respectfully ask the commission to take the following steps. First, incentivize Tidewater to include meaningful retail on the project site. Size, that size proper appropriately to serve this neighborhood. Second, if the onsite footprint is too constrained, encourage and incentivize the developer to secure or utilize a nearby or adjacent property to provide walkable retail. The city has successfully used incentives for the Felix Plaza site and a similar approach. The city has successfully used incentives for the Ferrox Plaza site and a similar approach here would be, would directly support the city's state priorities. Balanced redevelopment requires more than housing alone and requires essential services that support daily life and make neighborhoods livable, walkable and attractive to residents and workers. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to thoughtful community-centered planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, does anyone else want to speak on this item before we hear from remote speakers? I don't see anybody here in the hall, so remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the end item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. The title of this, so recording officer, do we have any remote participant wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, by his chair.
Okay, so I will close the public comment and I will have, now the applicant will have two minutes to speak if they want, they want to speak or add extra something, comments or anything.
Yeah, just a couple of things that we didn't get to, but just wanted to mention the extensive site investigation work we've done onsite with the water board. It's something we take very seriously. I think we're well ahead. We're getting close to, we've submitted a site management plan to the water board and we expect to have that approval at the beginning of next year. So something we take seriously. And then also lastly, there is some existing public art onsite that we're trying to be very respectful and thoughtful of how that is addressed and that remains a really accessible community asset. There is a piece called Pacificus that's on our north northern portion. We're actually, and we've spoken to both artists, just want to mention that. And we're, we're proposing to relocate Pacificus up to the north, northern, eastern portion of the site. It was that large bio-retention planter that was discussed earlier. We think that'll actually look and feel like an extension of Swiggle's Park and that'll actually feel almost like more of a park amenity to the community. And then also there's a, a piece that's on the southern portion of our site that, it also has a twin piece on the south of Stewart and we're looking to relocate that on the parcel south of Stewart on the other side of the drive aisle. So I think both vehicular and pedestrian traffic will still be able to experience that piece of art just very close by to where it was originally intended. So just wanted to mention that. And I also want to leave you with that, you know, when, when we read the waivers and they're just words, I think, I think it doesn't jump off, it jumps off the page. And I think we will come back to you with a lot more visual justification to really illustrate some of those waivers because I think we owe that to you all as a part of our process. So thank you.
Thank you. And now I will ask question, comments from my colleagues for this project. So Commissioner Pine, please.
Thank you. And thank you to, thank you to, thank you to staff, thank you to the applicant, thank everyone that commented. I have a number of comments. First, first of all, I'm, I'm really grateful to applicant for saying that they're going to provide us more justifications regarding waivers as, as you know, and as anyone doesn't know that, know they will. The legal require, the legal requirement is that the waivers are for the development standards that would physically preclude the develop, the development of the project. I always like, when if I'm approving a waiver, I always like know that is in fact physically blocked, physically preventing the development of the project. And I'm not trying to figure out myself how it's doing that because that's, because that's, because I do not want to have to figure out why it's doing it. That's, that is, that is, in my opinion, the applicant's responsibility. So I'm very grateful to hear that that's happening. I'm a little concerned about the interior sidewalk widths. I noticed some five-foot sidewalk widths. Those are, that's, in my opinion, six-foot sidewalk widths are, are overly narrow, but that is the, that is the city requirement. That is the standard. I think we should be revisiting the standard, but that's not the, that's not, that's not applicant's problem. But the interior five-foot sidewalk width just strike me as even more narrow kind of. And that's not great if people are trying to get by or if somebody's, you know, has a stroller or a wheelchair or something that, that would, that can be an issue. Regarding the dense, regarding the dense, the one wafer specifically, the one about trees per common space, I'd kind of like to have an exact number on that rather than just saying not met. I, that's a numeric one. I think we can find out what the actual density of that is. There's a question, this is probably for staff, but one thing I think, one thing I've kind of think, been thinking of when we've been looking at this is that there's, it's not quite the same because it's R two and it's basically grandfathered lots in a different part of the city. But we've had multiple requests for variances from single-family homeowners come before us that in situations where we're basically saying, this lot is, this lot does not meet the current lot size requirements. And they're trying to, you know, do something in their backyard or something and we end up, we end up getting a variance request because it's hard for them to fit whatever they're trying to do in their yard because they're, because of their abnormal lot size. So one thing I'd be curious about is if staff has any concerns or just insight frankly onto how the lot size waivers we'd be granting are, would be likely to interact with, say down the line if there's, if the residents, if the future owners, homeowners want to make some kind of improvement, like are, is there a risk that we're going to have that like, you know, probably not any of us sitting here today, but like the, you know, the planning commission of ten, twenty years from now is going to have to worry about, it's going to be getting a bunch of variants requested because I would like to just head that off if possible. And there's a couple ways we could hit. And, and I'd be curious if you, staff mentioned a previous development with small lots like this that I think might be possibly a precedent to look after. The applicant, the applicant mentioned that, now I, now that being said, I do actually like having these kind of smaller, these detached, smaller, single-family homes is kind of a, a type to be looking at in the future. Like I don't know that they're super well contemplated by our current, by our current planning code. But like, I do think it's a type that's worth, that's frankly worth encouraging and that might be something to just kind of look into is how to make sure it's, that's all legal, preferably without having to use a bunch of waivers at a future time. So maybe when we're looking at, I don't know if this quite goes onto the single-family home design guidelines that we're going to be looking at next year, but just, I think that's, that is a type worth considering how we're supporting kind of going forward. And to previous and Commissioner Vice Chair Shukla's comment earlier, I would say that there are a lot of very specific legal things that apply to mobile home parks. I would, like, maybe there's a kind of visual similarity, but I would not make that comparison in any real legal way because there are just so many very specific laws relating to mobile home parks that I wouldn't want to consider them similarly. So that's me fetching, but stuff, but I actually do overall like that we are, that we're, that we're proceeding with development on this project. I like that we're adding, I like that we're converting an industrial to residential site into residential. I, I do share the concern shared with members of the public about, about commercial in this area, but I don't think it's reasonable to expect this project to address it. It's not, well, it would be possible. It's not something really contemplated by the zoning. I think, I think what we'd be actually wanting to look at is to reexamine the plan more broadly. And I don't think it's reasonable to do that on a project-specific basis. I, I think that is a, something to talk to your friendly neighborhood city council member about. I, I like that this is, I like all of the, I like, as I've said before, I like all the circulation here. I like, I like seeing lots and lots of pedestrian access. I like that it's not just a wall along, to, along DeGuen and Stewart, although the one other thing I wanted to say along DeGuen and Stewart is that on page thirty-one of the East Sunnyvale Area Sensitive Place Plan, there's a suggestion that for specifically coast live oak trees on DeGuen and, and maybe this is just personal preference for, but they are native species and I'd love it if we could get some, you know, coast live oaks worked and, worked in here somewhere. That's, that's just a suggestion. But, but I like, I like that I'm hearing that the process, from a process perspective, the parts of the process we've got that happened before this even gets to us have been going very efficiently. I, my view of Sunnyville, my view for Sunnyvale development has always been that, you know, if it's legal, if it meets, if it meets the zoning, if it meets the requirements, meets the general plan, you should be able to build and you shouldn't have a bunch of roadblocks thrown in your way trying to build. And that looks like that's what's happening here and I'm very glad to hear that. I like that it's all electric. And, and I, and I also really like that it's a, and I also liked hearing that there's some work on potential traffic mitigation. I know that some, sometimes falls outside of our specific ambit, but it's always something I like to see the city working on. So that's, that's all I had. I'm actually very much looking forward to this coming back for a public hearing next, early next year and I, and I'm glad to see the site redeveloping. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. And we have Commissioner Seroni, please.
Thank you. So I have a, I have a question for the applicant, which may or may not be able or willing to answer, but is there anything you can tell us about the, the price point you see for these smaller detached, single-family homes?
I don't know if we have a specific value in mind. I think, you know, knowing that this is two to two and a half years away from developing, you know, but I do think there is a lot of demand here for that product type. So probably more, certainly more than the attached townhome product.
Okay. And, you know, we've heard a number of times to the public the concern about, and discussed here, the question about retail and the, while I think we wouldn't expect the applicant to just throw in some retail for the fun of it, the, you know, there are, there are possible incentives that the, the city could look at. For example, with the village centers, they have an arrangement, passed an ordinance where instead of the B M R requirement, the, the developer could put in a certain like ten percent or something of, of the area for, for retail. Not, I, I'm not necessarily saying that makes sense here, but, you know, that's an example of, of a, of an incentive that is in, in play right now. So I guess my question for staff is, is the city engaging with the developer to talk about possible alternatives?
The developer's been kind of looking around. We've been in chats with them, but there's no guarantee on what they'll be able to do.
Sure. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Seroni. I think I'm going to, I'm, I have a, a comment that, first of all, I want to, I want to, I think it's, I want to thank applicant because this is a very new product in the sunny, in Sunnyvale. Are we, because we are like very single-family home and computer like industry, like the offices community. And so this is like a completely new, high-density product is coming in the, you're bringing, bringing it into the Sunnyvale. That's great. Also, the product which you are using E I E Fs, I'm very familiar with it, but most of the contractors are not familiar with it. So when you, I know that it's a, it's a very good product if built correctly. It has a high cost, initial cost, but it would be nice to give that some references to the city for that product to take repair, to do repair or something because we, as you are bringing these new products, we would like to have our contractors to get trained to do some work for that one. So that's just the request to kind of familiarize Sunnyvale with that product. The second one is that I, I do, I do agree with all my commissioners, fellow commissioners, that we have a lot of waivers and everything, but I still encourage people to speak about retail, the demand, I mean, what they need, because I would still encourage them to come and talk about it. Because who knows, one day other developer may, they may bring this issue. Even they themselves are bringing another project, maybe bring retail because as there is a demand for it. So I think it's good to voice your opinion. So thank you for that. And that's the comments. And I think if you can bring, even you come for planning commissioner meeting, if you can bring a little, a little product here, like a little wall or something, so all other people can get, I mean, small products, so they can know that it's a good product in a way. But it's people see it and then they can get an idea. But that's just my, those are my comments and that's about it. Hoping to see you soon in the next year. Thank you. With that, let's see. With that, we, with that, I'll close public comments. And we will adjourn the meeting and the next planning commission meeting will start at seven forty, seven forty-five. Thank you. I know.
Yeah, like honestly, we could probably
I can tell.
Slow walk.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Let's call to order the planning commission meeting on, uh, of November twenty-fourth at seven forty-five P M. The city doesn't tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyville prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to cre- creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe and respected. Planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission for consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communication must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, generally referred to as within the commission subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's commission comments are not related to a general agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of disagreements with the content of their speech. Location, location and online meeting details are available on the planning commission agenda. Use the show caption button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for public comments for the agenda item, which will be strictly prohibited, uh, enforced. Guidelines are posted on the, uh, city website and on the planning commission, commission meeting agenda. Please join me to the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Recording officer, can, um, will you please have the roll call?
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
Vice Chair Shukla.
Present.
Commissioner Seroni.
Present.
Commissioner Fagoni.
Present.
We have four commissioners present. The absences of Chair Iglesias and Commissioner Davis are excused. The absence of Commissioner Sakura is unexcused.
Thank you. This is now the public's opportunity to address the commission on topics not listed on today's agenda. This section is limited to fifteen minutes and may be extended or continued over the public hearing or general business section of the meeting. Individuals may only speak once during oral communication. This planning commission, uh, commission meeting is a limited public forum and the commission can regulate the time, place and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral commu- communication must be limited to matter within the commission's authority, which is known as the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside the commission subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. This allows the commission to conduct its business in reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of disagreements with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Um, raise your digital hand now on dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. We don't have any public participation. I don't see any card. And we have, um, any, uh, digital, uh, public participation digitally?
I see no hands raised, Vice Chair.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and close the oral communication. I will go ahead and open public comment on consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participation in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Does anyone want to speak on consent calendar item? I don't see anyone. And do we have any remote speakers for consent calendar items?
You can have, Vice Chair.
Thank you so much. Um, now I will close the public comment and I will now ask for motion from my colleague. Um, Commissioner Pine, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Move the consent calendar submitted.
I, okay. Uh, I can raise. I will second it. So is um, is there a discussion or advocacy in the motion? No, this is, uh, is, um, recording officer, please conduct the vote.
Passes with four yeses and three commissioners absent.
Thank you. So moving on to our next item. Item number twenty-five dash zero nine six five. Proposed project, related applicant, applications on a four point ninety-nine acre site development agreement. Introduce an ordinance approving a D A between the city of Sunnyville and B E P Moffett Park L L C. Moffett Park Site Master Plan to establish horizontal site planning and vertical floor area calculations. And, um, Moffett Park Special Development Permit to demolish two existing office slash R and D buildings and all site works and conduct three three level office, three, three level office and R and D building over a three level above grade podium with podium level private roof deck. Location is three thirty-three dash three eighty-five Moffett Park Drive. Bless you. I'll go, um, and do we have, um, the presentation? Thank you. A staff presentation.
Yes, good evening. Vice Chair Shukla and planning commissioners. My name is Margaret Netto, project planner. Tonight we'll be reviewing a project, um, located at three 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 Moffett Park Drive. The five acre project site is comprised of one lot located at three 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 Moffett Park Drive. The site is bordered by Moffett Park Drive to the south, a private drive to the west and light industrial uses to the north, west and east. Residential uses are located south of the project site across State Route two thirty-seven and Persian Drive. The project site is located within the Moffett Park specific plan. The site is zoned as M P O two, which is intended for higher intensity corporate and professional uses. The site is currently developed with one story, approximately ten thousand square foot research building and this, and in the southwest corner of the site, a two-story approximately seven seventy-nine thousand square foot office building in the northern portion of the site and associated surface parking. The property owner is requesting to access bonus F A R available under the Moffett Park specific plan for the project site together with a development agreement as required for bonus F A R developments. The subject site is currently permitted to be developed with about seventy-six thousand square feet of floor area. And that's about thirty-five percent of office, research and development. The applicant is requesting an additional two hundred and seventeen thousand square feet of floor area under the bonus F A R program for non-residential developments in the Moffett Park specific plan with the provision of community benefits as described later on in this presentation. The required approvals are development agreement to access the Moffett Park specific plan development reserve. Site master plan establishes the building envelope and development, um, benefits and Moffett Park's special development permit for architectural design, site layout and landscaping. As far as the development agreement, as mentioned earlier, the project includes a development agreement as well as planning approvals for the R and D building. A D A is a contract between the city and the developer that the city approves through adoption of an ordinance that allows for early investing of development rights and greater certainty for projects. The D N, the D A includes city benefits, a community benefit contribution of about three million dollars, design and construction of a lead platinum building, all electric with no gas, no natural gas. Benefits included in the site master plan are approximately twelve thousand square feet of private privately owned and publicly accessible. Um, and that's considered a popa area and approximately six thousand three hundred and seventy-nine square feet of a hillside pollinator garden or a mini park. Also, a bike repair station, approximately nine hundred and sixty-four square feet and a connector shuttle drop off along Moffett Park Drive. The developer benefits, um, the bonus of two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and four thousand net new square feet from the Moffett Park specific plan development reserve, a parking adjustment to allow for additional parking, shared parking and deferred completion of the laneway improvements. The proposed project includes the demolition of the existing structure. My off one. Well, the proposed project includes the demolition of the existing tru- structure and onsite improvements to construct a three-story building totaling two hundred and ninety-three thousand square feet. The building will be situated above a three-story podium that provides three levels of above-grade parking. The project is seeking approval of a site master plan established horizontal site planning and vertical floor area allocations and a D A, N D A benefits. The project complies with all the development standards, including including the building coverage, floor ratio and setbacks. The project proposes about ninety-five thousand square feet of building mass coverage, which does not include the podium, but meets the, meets the requirement. The Moffett Park specific plant plan does allow exclusion of the podium. The required setbacks for the, for the site are ten-foot minimum and forty-foot maximum for building frontages along streets. The project meets the required setbacks of Moffett Park Drive and Lane Way. There we go. As noted, the project complies with all the development standards. The maximum building height allowed is a hundred and forty-five feet. The proposed project is eighty-five feet tall at the top of the third floor and ninety-five feet to the top of the mechanical screening. Several designed elements help to create a visual interest such as the geometric breaks, each building creating kind of a bowtie design. The project propose proposes about ten thousand square feet of creation space. The project meets the minimum requirement. Approximately thirteen thousand square feet, um, of privately owned accessible space will be provided along Moffett Park Drive and near the bike repair station. The site currently contains a hundred and fifty-one trees, of which seventy qualifies protected trees based on their trunk circumference. Of the hundred and fifty-one trees, a hundred and twenty-eight are proposed for removal to accommodate the construction of buildings, the podium and other site improvements. To mitigate the loss of trees, the project includes the installation of eighty-seven new trees around the perimeter of the building to provide effective screening. Here's the front elevation. Um, this is from Moffett Park Drive from the south. This is on the left side facing the building. This is Lane Way. It's the partial northwest corner. This is the rear elevation, the north. And this is on the right side, the partial south and east corner. And an aerial view of the project site. And the next slide is the Moffett Park Drive as a rendering of the pop, of the project. And the next slide is the Moffett Park Drive as a rendering of the pop, of the project. A community outreach meeting was held on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. There were no comments from the public. We received a letter of support from the Moffett Park Business Group, which is attached to the staff report. On October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, staff presented the proposed project to the Planning Commission for Comments. Site and architectural and landscape plans were, were provided for discussion. The commission discussed the, the building, the bowtie design, the overall architectural design, the location of and availability of the ADA parking, inclusion of the hillside pollinator garden, the existing and proposed planting of the trees, the interim solution for the dead-end sidewalk on the east side of the property. One member of the public spoke regarding the, and regarding interest in the union labor for this project. Staff recommends alternative one, which modifies, which introduces an ordinance, a development agreement, to adopt the findings required and also make the findings to approve the SEQA determination and approve the Moffett Park Specific Plan and, and Moffett Park Special Development Permit based on the recommended findings and conditions of approval. And also to introduce the ordinance for the development agreement, make the required findings for SEQA and the Moffett Park's special development permit with modifications on the recommended findings and conditions of approval. Staff has some modifications to the conditions of approval, which I will read into the record. Can I have those plans? Can I have that up? Yeah, can you scroll down a little? Yeah, thank you. So on GC six, public improvements, just for clarification, staff is recommending, which is in red, developer shall only be required to provide upgrades to existing public improvements as needed to serve the project's incremental needs and the immediate vicinity of the project. And if you can scroll to the next one, Joey. And this one just clarifies when the fees and bonds need to be paid. And, and it's the top, the first sentence, or as specified in the development agreement. The transportation impact fee should not be highlighted. Can you scroll down, Joey? Oh, and then just for this one also, it's the community benefit. There was a typo in the three million. There was an extra zero in there. And then also, we added prior to the issuance of the building permit or as specified in the development agreement. And we deleted BP thirty-seven. It was a redundant condition. And then EP three, the upgrade of existing public improvements. We added the last sentence for clarity. Developer shall only be required to provide upgrades to the existing public improvements as needed to serve the project's incremental needs and in the immediate vicinity of the project. And then this one, we also clarified. This is EP five, easement and deeds. The issuer, issuance of certificate of occupancy. That is all. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm also joined by Principal Planner Julia, Julia Klein. And we also have our SEQA consultants from DJ Powers here for any SEQA questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Now I will have my fellow commissioners to raise their hand to ask questions. Commissioner Pine, please.
Yeah, just a couple kind of technical questions. Give me one second to pull those up. Okay. This, so first, while we're looking at the conditions of approval. First of all, BP thirty-eight was uh, that's all contemplate, like I, we're striking that because that's all contemplated in the other condition of approval, which I don't have the number of off the top of my head regarding phased development of the sidewalk improvements.
Was that a question or?
Yes.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, just, we're striking BP thirty-eight because my understand, because that's con- because that's all resolved by the by the just previously discussed phased implementation of the site. Cool.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay, the other one was, I had a, the other condition I had a question of was a EP twenty-eight, which is on page twenty-one of attachment five. There's a reference. I'm about to be cranky, but uh, there's a reference on EP twenty-eight to five driveway approaches and could staff clarify why it says that? Because there are three driveways in this process, project, so my misunderstanding what it means by driveway approaches or?
I'm sorry, can you clarify? Did you say BP twenty-eight?
E, 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 Papa.
Oh, thank you.
It's on page twenty-one.
Okay, thanks.
Install a total of five new city-standard details, six Charlie dash two driveway approaches along the project frontage.
That must be a typo since there really is only three. Actually, only two. I mean, there's only one on either side of the building, so.
Okay. Yeah, EP twenty-eight.
So what was the question? I, I have EP twenty-eight pulled up. What was the question again? I'm sorry?
Uh, yeah, it says install a total of five new driveway approaches. And my understanding was that there are only three driveways in this project, so I was a little confused.
Yes, that is a typo. We'll circle back with Public Works and just correct that prior to City Council meeting.
Okay. Now, and I apologize, this is going to be Martin is pedant is being an extreme, this is going to be a session of me being really pedantic, but uh, uh, on page five of attachment three, there is a finding that, for the finding five, it says that the employees working in the office will use existing and future downtown commercial and entertainment uses to help support a vibrant area. Should that say like, use existing and future uses in the Moffett Park area? Because downtown is like three miles away.
I'm sorry, did you say attachment three?
Yes, this is, this is not the conditions of approval. This is the required findings.
Okay, and what page was that?
Uh, page five of five.
Got it. Uh, let me look. Where there is reference to areas outside of the Moffett Park Specific Plan, it's, it's meant to refer to the Moffett Park Specific Plan, so we'll correct that.
Okay, and the other one I was hoping could get corrected was the page beforehand. Uh, finding three, the final bullet part, point, just kind of ends. A lead-platinum all-electric building to further the city's.
Um, we will also clean that up and finish that sentence prior to City Council meeting.
Okay, and the one really, the one other, and this is also, again, I apologize for the pedantry, but uh, this is the ordinance, this is attachment two, page two. There are two references in the whereas, in the penultimate whereas clause and in the section one about plant, about Planning Commission hearing findings dated November tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Should that be today's date, the twenty-fourth?
Yes, we'll make that correction.
Thank you. Uh, that's actually all I had. I didn't have anything substantive. I, I thought the, I, I act, I thought the presentation.
Thank you.
I thought, sorry, I thought the presentation was ver, was, was, and the staff report were very high-quality and well-done, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next one is Commissioner Seroni, please.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair, and thanks for the presentation. I just want to follow up on, this is, we discussed this last month and about the parking down there, and I'm glad to see the project is proposing adding some public parking because, you know, looking around down there, there are a lot of big signs up surrounding buildings, no Google parking here. And maybe people just don't like Google, but it gives the impression there's a, a shortage of parking down there. Do we have any feel for that? Is, is that an issue in that part of Moffett Park?
Not that I'm aware of, but Sean, do you know of any issues?
Yeah, I, I don't know of any shortage other than the post office not having parking. But I really know of. And when we did the specific plan, we analyzed the proposed uses and did the parking ratios based on what new combined and multiple uses on sites would, would go at. So it'll balance out, hopefully.
All right. Well, thank you. I have a couple of questions for the applicant, so I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any, any other people have no questions, so you have you have question for the staff before I go to applicant? Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I would just actually like to, in the hopes of kind of addressing Commissioner Seroni's point, note that I, you, this was a decade ago at this way, but I did actually used to work in Moffett Park, not super far away from the site, and I did not, at, at that point, I did not notice any parking issues. Granted, this was a decade ago, and granted, we, when we build out the site, it's got Moffett Park Plan, it's going to look very, very different than it did a decade ago, but that is my two cents of personal experience.
Thank you. So now I will have so ten minutes is provided for the, for the applicant to present. Five minutes before the public hearing, so is there an applicant presentation? Please. Thank you.
Yes.
In order, I thought it was ten minutes, then public, then five minutes after that.
So ten minutes bef, now?
I thought they got fifteen minutes, total ten, then public, then five.
Is it? Total ten minutes? Oh, okay. I, yeah, turn ten minutes is prov, that's true. I just somehow I read the script, but in my mind, I generally we give five minutes, so I changed it. So weird. But anyway, ten minutes is provided. Thank you.
Hi, nice to see you all again. David Hardy, the Senior Vice President with Ellis Partners. And it's good to be back in front of you, and thank you for your time tonight to present our project, Platform Moffett Park. Before I start, I also want to thank the city staff for their partnership throughout this process. This is the first commercial application under the new Moffett Park Specific Plan. And it's never easy to be first, but it has been a process of respect and collaboration that brings us, brings a great project in front of you today, and we appreciate the staff who are here today and though, all those who have touched this application along the way. Oh, I think we skipped one. Nope. Oh, I spared, I spared you a slide. Okay, our project, Platform Moffett Park, is a two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-square-foot office and research facility designed to serve the next generation of companies that call Moffett Park home. The project is lead-platinum and all-electric. It's two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand square feet, or eight-hundred parking spaces, one acre of private open space, and thirteen-thousand square feet of privately-owned, publicly-accessible open space. The key to the project is the podium design, which is an innovative approach developed by HGA Architects. There's three parking levels in the podium with two-three-level office buildings perched on top. Elevating the buildings creates security without fences. Security is paramount for technology and innovation companies, perhaps now more than ever. Placing the workspaces three levels in the air creates a hard layer of security that cannot be matched without unfriendly and disruptive fences and gates at the ground plane. The podium also avoids the need for an unsightly standalone parking structure. Parking areas are concealed by ground floor programming like lobbies, creation space, and the hillside pollinator garden that fronts Moffett Park Drive and Highway two-thirty-seven. Elevating the buildings also means that the works, workplaces start on the fourth floor, thus enhancing light, air, and views at all workplace levels. Placed on top of the podium along with the buildings is a one-acre private and secured park, another benefit of the podium design. The park will provide drought-tolerant and pollinator-supportive vegetation and will contribute to the ecological goals of the specific plan. It will support a variety of outdoor programming for fit, from fitness to outdoor dining to an events lawn and amphitheater. The building orientation optimizes sunlight to the park and shelters wind. The views will be spectacular from this elevated space. The buildings are designed with a bowtie shape, which is another innovative approach. It creates drama and visual interest and maintains the strong building form while also exceeding facade modulation standards. The canted base gives the appearance of weightlessness, like the building is resting gently on the podium. It will be an iconic view for vehicles traveling on Highway two-thirty-seven. The structure is also designed to be mass timber-ready, which means that the structural framing and sheer elements have been designed so that it can be either a steel or timber structure. The curtain wall is designed for high-energy performance and bird safety. The pattern of clear vision glass and opaque panels gives an homage, is an homage to binary computer code. There are three levels of parking with eight-hundred stalls, two-hundred-and-eighteen of which are public and five-hundred-and-eighty-two of which are private. The ground level is the public level with a dedicated public entrance off the laneway. The second and third levels are private with a dedicated entrance in the back of the building. Accessible parking is available within both the public and the private levels. Front and rear lobbies are for, dedicated for each building, as well as a loading dock dedicated for each building, are also within the parking volume. The floor plates are an optimal size for today's tenants of around forty-thousand square feet, and the floor-to-floor dimension is twenty feet on the podium level and sixteen foot six on the upper levels. The podium level is designed to accommodate amenity spaces that connect to the private park, including cafe, fitness, wellness, and co-working. Each building has two cores, which allows for multi-tenant flexibility. The podium-level spaces are optimized for R and D use. Not only are they twenty-foot high floor-to-floor, but they also will be low-vibration spaces because they sit on the heavy concrete podium. Down at the street level, we are implementing a public realm that delivers the complete street and micro-mobility goals of the specific plan. We are upgrading the street section along Moffett Park Drive and installing a new laneway on the west side of the site. There are multi-use shared paths along each of these frontages, which will greatly improve connectivity to Humboldt Court and the bike, bike network to the north. We are also providing expansive privately-owned, publicly-accessible areas along Moffett Park Drive and a bike repair station that will ma, that we will maintain as a public amenity. We are also providing a shuttle bus stop along Moffett Park Drive, and our hope is that the TMA shuttle will eventually shuttle will eventually stop there. Finally, we are implementing 31,000 square feet of new planted area at street level. Our approach to the creation space is another innovative part of the project. We really leaned into making this space a prominent feature on the project and a great place to work. The creation space is a high bay space right on the laneway with roll-up doors that open to an outdoor patio. The creation space also has direct access to loading and parking. Platform Moffett Park is a lead platinum and all electric design. The structure is designed to be mass timber ready. As I said previously, there's 50,000 square feet of pollinator supportive plantings, and we are fully mitigating all projected tree removals. There's a half megawatt of solar on the roofs. There's 203 EV chargers that will be installed on day one. And there's also enhanced stormwater infrastructure, which treats stormwater runoff from city streets in excess of code requirements. In the interest of time, I won't go through the slide in detail, other than to reiterate what was in the city staff's presentation, that our project supports all the goals and policies of the Moffett Park specific plan. On this slide, we list a handful where we feel our design employs an innovative approach to supporting the goals of the plan. But this doesn't show all of them because it would have been 10 slides long if we listed all the goals and policies. Our project includes many benefits to the Sunnyvale community. We're making a contribution to Sunnyvale's Community Benefit Fund. We're providing the aforementioned POPAs areas. Our project provides upgrades to the street, bike, and pedestrian networks to support the plan's mobility goals. We're providing 218 public parking spaces, 77 of which are EV chargers, and the enhanced stormwater infrastructure I discussed on the last slide. The development agreement terms are an eight-year base term and a five-year discretionary extension that's subject to the payment of the Community Benefit Fund contribution. And we're getting 205,000 gross square feet from the development reserve of that 11.1 million development reserve allocation. We will be paying a 3.1 million Community Benefit Fund contribution. We'll be providing the onsite POPAs and other community benefits I mentioned on the prior slide, and we're delivering a lead platinum and all electric building. That's the end of our presentation. Thank you very much, and we look forward to your questions. I did better this time. I took more, I took all 10 minutes last time. Thank you.
Okay, so I will have my fellow commissioners to ask questions for the applicant. Please, Commissioner Seroni, please.
Thank you. Let's see, I just had a couple of questions. There's a reference to an outdoor kitchen and somewhere else a cafe. What, you know, food services are intended to be available for the occupants?
So we are providing the infrastructure to support onsite full-service cafe, including grease interceptor, also shafts up to the roof for grease exhausts. This application doesn't include us, you know, installing and building out that, but we are providing sort of all of the infrastructure that will support it.
And I guess you haven't decided if you're going with steel or mass timber, but is, is, is that just the podium? You're talking about the podium for mass timber or steel?
I'm sorry, the podium will be concrete. The parking podium would be concrete. The two buildings that sit on top of it have the optionality of being steel or timber buildings.
I see. Okay. And I know a month ago Commissioner Schuclask about this, but could you explain a little more the creation space? Like, is it subsidized? And who can rent this space? And how do you decide that?
The, the space, I believe that the requirement is that the space is leased separately than the, than the buildings above. So it has its own dedicated lease for that space. We will be marketing it broadly to all the, all tenants who can fit the use category. There's a pretty strict use category for the creation space that the specific plan allows. And I believe the, the municipal code also has codified what type of uses can go in there.
But is a, you know, the rental per square feet or whatever, is it lower than the rest of the, the building?
That, that's not a requirement. We intend to, to market it and let the market dictate what the, what the rent will, will be on that space.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seroni. Now, next Commissioner Pine, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for including the city policies that you wanted to highlight. That's always appreciated. Just a couple of questions. I guess my big question is, what do you kind of anticipate the development time, assuming, you know, assuming we approve this, assuming City Council approves this on the ninth, what do you kind of anticipate the future development timeline of this looks like? Because I mean, I know that one of the big things in the, in the development agreement is that, you know, it gives you the, you know, it's an eight-year development agreement with possibility running five years to that. So I guess my, so my big question is just kind of what do you, I know, I know, and I know there's a lot of uncertainty given economic conditions, but just ballparking, what's, what's kind of your estimate for the development timeline?
I can tell you that, that we would expect a construction, a, a designing permitting, you know, getting, getting to working drawings and permitting, and then constructing timeframe of about three years. The, the exact time to break ground, that sort of crystal ball stuff, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of, you know, good office space that's available on the sublease market throughout this region. And so some of that needs to be absorbed in order, and, but that, there's a lot of indications in the market right now that that is underway. And so we're, we're, we will be looking to construct this as, as soon as the, you know, the market allows us to do so. But it's, it's crystal ball stuff to, to be able to put an exact timeframe on that. I wish I had a more clear answer. Believe me, if I did, then, you know, I'd probably be doing something different right now.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't looking for, you know, an exact
Yeah.
day and date, just, but that, that's what I was looking.
The, the, I think to, to maybe, the, the long development agreement terms are a reflection of the market still rebounding from COVID and the need to have a, a, a long window to construct this. However, our goal is that we would construct, construct this as, as soon as possible.
Thank you. And, and my other question is, you mentioned the homage to binary code. Is it, is there anything specifically, is it, is there any specific binary representation that's encoded? Like if I run, if I run it through like an Ask, by an ASCII converter, am I going to get anything fun?
Is there?
I think it's pretty abstracted. There was this slide we used in our presentation.
I'm just gonna say, for the benefit of people remote, I, yeah, please speak into the microphone.
I'm Casey. Thank you for letting us present this project. I think it has been abstracted. I think originally there was some maybe intentionality to put some coded message in there. There was a parachute that NASA launched up into the sky some years ago that had a coded message on it. I don't know if you remember that. Anyway, it was kind of based, inspired by that, as well as being adjacent to Moffett Park and the Silicon Valley history of computer coding and then everything that goes on here. So it's abstracted. Beyond that, it's more of a solar mitigation strategy of dispersing the opaque glass in the clear glass to create an even dissipation of sunlight and solar heat gain within the inner space. So.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Our next commissioner, Figoni, please.
Yeah, a quick question, and thank you for your presentation. I, I really liked the, the architecture is very beautiful. Question I had was, in regards to the, the solar panels that you have on the building, since it's an R and D facility, are those solar panels expected to, to power just the percentage of the building? Or is it expected to scale with, you know, I, I would think if they're doing R and D, there, there could be some heavy power consumption. Who knows? So I'm just wondering, is there other power options that you have integrated or built into this to scale so that this property doesn't, you know, outlive its purpose sooner than later? So I don't know if the solar panels would, would scale with it or the way they're designed. I'm just curious.
As far as, I guess, power infrastructure to serve, you know, an R and D use, certainly we, we would expect that a, a tenant may want to, want to have some type of battery system onsite for their R and D use to supplement the, the energy that they're drawing up the grid. Right now, as, as designed, in it, in absence of having that specific design and build out of the, the interior of the space and the exact use of the space, as designed, the, the solar system will dump back onto the grid. But you're right, that there's certainly the opportunity, and most likely, the, the tenant will want to directly deploy that power from the solar system. As far as scaling up of the system, I, we're you, we're using all of the available rooftop area that we have. So scaling up of the system would require a higher efficiency, solar panels to, which they're getting more and more efficient every day. And there's bi, bifacial panels, and there's all sorts of technology that's happening in that space. So I think that the, but as far as the area, we have kind of maxed out the amount of area that we can have it on the roofs.
So you're saying in the future, as the solar technology gets better, you'd probably upgrade that to accommodate more energy consumption?
I think that there would be certainly a consideration of, if efficiency gets better to, or there'd be an evaluation that would take place as to whether or not to remove the existing panels in place and replace them.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. I was, when you, it was great presentation, and you said that the security by design, you created the whole lab at the higher, at the upper level. So thinking of that, that when you have this, my fellow commissioner asked for about the creator space. So is it the, that you, when you will be renting, and the creator space is for that private company, unless you make some kind of business transaction or deal, or asking them that provide the community access or something like that? Is that correct? Like, that's what I'm, if I'm understanding, there is no community benefit in a way that like, it's creator space, but it's for the independent tenant. It's not to the community, correct? That's what I understood. Yeah. Can you explain a little bit about it? Yeah.
I, I can, I can try. We also have the, our planning staff here who, who helped to develop the plan, and, but they may be able to answer some questions here. But no, it is intended to be a space that supports a private development or growing, you know, companies who are trying to develop a creator type of use, is my understanding of the intent. And the kind of neighborhood serving uses are located elsewhere in, in the specific plan, not, not in this, in this O2 zoning of the plan.
Vice Chair Schukel, if I can maybe just add a little bit more for Dave here. It's intended to meet certain interior heights, and it's intended, it is sort of a community benefit because it provides a space that's kind of been eaten up with just these larger office buildings. And so it's trying to put some of those spaces back in the, in the community in Moffett Park.
No, I understand. Thank you so much for clarification, because all this time, we almost always think that, oh, creation space is like maker's space, that anybody can go in or something. That's why I kept on asking last time in study session, because we, it's a different concept in, in my mind. So it's great for clarification. And in that question that you have the POPA, like the public access, the road, which stops at the staircase, like which goes on to podium on the north, south, west side of it. So I was wondering, are you going to put some gate there? Because you will need the security, because it's a private space. So will be, will it be gate or there? Because it goes all the way to the steps.
The, yeah, it's a great question. At the top of those steps, there will be a gate. And so that is, but, you know, the, you'll hit a, you'll hit a, you'll hit a hard layer when you get to the, the top of the stairs. But we're trying, we tried to avoid putting fences and gates down at the ground plane. So, yeah.
And it will be reflecting pollinator? Like, I'm just, I'm just like, it's not, it's a very odd question, but like, because you have pollinator garden in the front when people will be walking. So I was just wondering that if you can just connect that. But that's just, I'm throwing an idea that way.
To put stairs on that.
Yeah, something on the outside or something. But anyway, this is, you don't have to. But I, because I thought about when I was reading the plan, that pollinator garden, maybe people can sit into it, like there is a bench or something that people are walking, and they want to, when they are waiting for their private shuttle to go, and maybe there is a place there, but then it's a pollinator garden. So maybe human beings can disturb the, the butterflies. So anyway, these are the question. I was just visualizing what's going to be that, you know?
Yeah, well, we envision it being a backdrop to the, the shuttle, the shuttle stop and the POPAs areas. And, and down at the, at the base, it, it, it comes down and almost meets the ground plane. So it'll, it'll be at a human scale and, and pedestrians and, and shuttle traffickers will be able to kind of interface with it, but, but not actually walk up into it. As far as the, the stairs, we, we studied this a number, we studied this, this a lot. The team can probably remember. We, we ultimately decided that it actually looks a lot better to have, that the stairs are behind it. So you go into a door that's next to it, and then you can get stairs up behind it. But having them integrated in with the landscaping, we felt diminished the design.
Yeah, I think I would be very, would love to see what that becomes, because that's great idea. But anyway, I think these are just the question.
Thank you.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. The item is 25, 225-0965. Click, please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on the telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on the members to the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speaker will have three minutes to speak. Does anyone want to speak on this item before we hear from the remote speakers? I don't see anyone here. So remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of the order will not be given the chance to speak on this item. The title of this agenda, it's the item I mentioned. I'm not going to repeat. Recording officer, do we have any remote participant wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Carrie Haywood, you have the floor to speak now.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Carrie Haywood, speaking on behalf of the Moffett Park Business Group. We're a membership-driven organization committed to supporting development, sustainability, and improved mobility. We're pleased to show our support for this project and support staff recommendation to approve alternative one. The platform project demonstrates strong alignment with the goals and design principles established in the Moffett Park specific plan, including sustainability, innovation, and the creation of a vibrant mixed-use environment. The proposal advances the vision of a modern ego district that integrates transit access, open space, and community orientated amenities. We view the platform project as a meaningful contribution to the continued transformation Moffett Park into a forward looking district that supports both economic growth and quality of life. We appreciate the planning commission's thoughtful consideration and leadership in advancing this project that reflects these shared values. Therefore, we encourage you to vote to approve alternative one. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair, we have no further hands raised.
Thank you. At this point, I will close the public hearing. I will now ask for discussion or motion from my colleagues.
Point of order.
Commissioner Pine, please.
The applicant has five minutes if they wish to use it.
I am, I am so sorry. I'm trying to steal away all your minutes and I am so, I apologize for it. Like, please, you have five minutes to close. Thank you.
I, I just want to thank the, the commission again for allowing us to present this today and thank you for your consideration. And thank you again to, to city staff for your collaboration throughout this process. We had some fun along the way and, and really respect you all and appreciate your, your efforts towards this. Also, thank you to the Moffett Park Business Group and Carrie for those kind words. And we don't have any further comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I will close the, I will now ask for discussion or motion from my colleagues. Commissioner Pine, please.
Thank you. A question to staff. I'm prepared to make a motion, but do I need to incorporate the technical corrections mentioned earlier in the motion?
Yes, I would recommend actually saying alternative two with modified conditions as read into the record by staff.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other commissioner hand. So I'm just gonna go ahead and make the motion. I move alternative to approve the development agreement and modify the site master plan special development permit with modifications. A, make the findings required by resolution thirty seven dash eighty one attachment through to the report with the modifications to finding three and finding five as read by staff. Recommend to the city council, the introduction of an ordinance approving and adopting a development agreement signed in B E P Moffett Park, which is attachment two with modification state that the planning commission was, hearing was, was held on November twenty fourth and the findings were recommended on November twenty fourth. Recommend to city council to make the required findings to approve the SEQA determination. Secret termination of the product is consistent with the specific plans program environmental impact report. No additional environmental views required. And D, recommend that city council to approve the Moffett Park specific, Moffett Park site master plan and Moffett Park special development permit based on the recommended findings and attachment four and the recommended conditions of approval and attachment five subject to modifications. First, as reported by staff in the staff presentation earlier tonight. Second, with modification to condition of approval, E P twenty eight regarding the driveway, regarding the driveway approaches. Uh, staff, was that clear?
If the commission could also just mention to address the typos that you raised during the meeting?
I thought I did that.
Yes. Is that automatically?
I, oh, I, that was the changes I made to A, B and D.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Pine, for item, the, item C and alternative two, did you read in Moffett Park specific plan or did you say downtown?
I did say downtown. I was just reading off the.
I know, sorry.
That was a typo. I did not catch. So change that to recommend that the secret determination is consistent with the Moffett Park specific plan environmental impact report and that no additional environmental view is required under section one five, one eight, three of the guidelines to California Environmental Quality Act. For, for C, A, B and D, as I said previously.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Commissioner Seroni?
A second.
Thank you.
Is there a discussion or advocacy you?
Thank you. Yes. Okay. To my motion. Okay. Yeah. So this tonight is actually very exciting because we spent all that time a couple of years ago on the Moffett Park, on the Moffett Park specific plan. Tonight's kind of the first night when we get to see that actually coming together. So I'm, I'm excited to make this motion. There's, there's, there are a lot of nice things I could say about this project, a lot of which I already said, another commissioner said when this came back to a study session. So I won't bore everybody by repeating them, but I want to pay, I want to call out specifically how this, how the big, kind of big goals of the Moffett Park specific plan were about the, it was supposed to, you know, we're talking at making it an eco innovation district. And you can see that in this design, you've got all of the green space, you've got the pollinator garden like this. I, you've got the lead platinum certification, you've got the mass, mass timber option, you have solar panels, you have all of, all of that just kind of being like, this is kind of what we meant. We were talking about an eco innovation district. We've got the creation space kind of more on the innovation side of that. Like this is all the kind of thing we were envisioning. We've got, and we've got innovative architecture. We've got all that kind of stuff. We were envisioning when we approved that, that, that those kind of goals, big goals in the Moffett Park specific plan, like we can get into like when we've, you see it in the staff report, you saw in the applicant presentation, all of the kind of detailed policies that this advances. And I can definitely support them. You know, support making all the findings, saying that this furthers those policies, et cetera. But the, but like those are, but like just even zooming back, like the big, this kind of, this is kind of what we were going for. We're talking about the big picture, kind of what we want to see in terms of new office in the Moffett Park specific plan. You've, we've discussed, there's, you can see all the bicycle, all the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Those are, I, you can see them in the project itself. You've got the public, you've got the, you've got the private space that public, public will have access to, which is great. You've got, you know, the first kind of developed bike pad improvements for the greater, for the greater Moffett Park, for the greater Soja neighborhood that this is starting to build out. Obviously those kind of baby steps there because it's only one site. But you kind of see it beginning to take shape. And the other thing I really actually wanted to highlight was something I don't even think we talked that much about, but the, but the sense of, but like we were talking, but like the visual interest in when you end, when you're kind of driving by, even when you're kind of driving by in two thirty seven, like something we didn't really discuss. I don't think that much with Moffett, but when we were doing the Lawrence station, where during some Lawrence station area projects, we discussed a lot about having, wanting people to see something interesting when they were entering Sunnyvale, like when, even if, even if they were just kind of zipping by on the Caltrain. And I think this kind of really furthers that goal of, you know, you're entering Sunnyvale and you see some good, interesting architecture being like, oh, hey, we're in Sunnyvale. Like that's, that is the kind of thing we should be doing all over the city and I, I'm glad to see it here. I can make the findings. Well, I can't make this findings regarding the, for secret regarding downtown specific plan because that would be very difficult, but I can make the sequel findings regarding that, that's consistent with the Moffett Park specific plan. Again, the, and there's a detailed environmental checklist, but there's, but again, this is just even on, but just on a big pictures, even just on the big picture scale, like you talk about eco innovation and you could practically put this project next to that on in the dictionary, like it's, it's, it's all the kind of off, all the kind of good office stuff we were looking for. And I, I just hope it gets built and finds and finds tenants sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Miss Commissioner, your second.
Thank you. Yeah. It's refreshing to see a project like this. I hope it does provide an example for other Moffett Park projects. It's a creative design. It provides real benefits to the community. It's not what we see for the residential projects we look at. It generally meets the city standards for this type of development. So it's a great addition to the, to the community and to the, the city. And it's visually appealing, you know, and it looks like a very attractive place to work. So I enthusiastically support this project. I did, I'm, you know, I mentioned the food services for a reason, the, and this was something that was discussed in the early discussions about Moffett Park. But, and from my own experience, I, I worked downtown Sunnyvale for a number of years. And so almost every day for lunch, I would go to the restaurants down here. And the people knew me, they knew what my likely order was and I went, you know, I would circulate around several of them. Later, the company moved to North Sunny, North San Jose and they had an in-house food service that was subsidized by the company. And then for several years, I, myself and thousands of people at this campus basically never left the campus. And even though there were restaurants close by, and I know there was a concern early on when there, when there was some restaurants in Moffett Park, they've virtually all closed now. As the vendors would say, well, I can compete with anything, but I can't compete with free. And so we are planning, you know, the plan does have retail and restaurants and active frontage and all this planned. And if, if every employer is doing in-house subsidized food, then they're going to get no business for lunch. It's going to be very hard to make that a viable business. Not that this particular example is going to make or break that, but I think it maybe is something we should be looking at as more projects move forward, how we address that or if there's a way to address that. But I'm happy to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to, my, my fellow commissioners have said enough things, so I don't want to repeat that. But I am completely in support of this project because I, I really like the, the architecture of it. I also like the concept. I also like the employees will be sitting in the podium. A lot of trees are gone, but butterflies will be hanging around and maybe the butterflies will benefit maybe community and they will go around. So I'm just making like, because there is nothing left for me to say. It's a good project and it's a great project to start with the Moffett Park a specific plan. So I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you. So record, a recording officer, please conduct the vote.
The motion passes with four yeses and three commissioners absent.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Vice Chair Shukla just mentioned that the project will be going to city council December ninth.
Oh, yes, the project will be going to the city council on December ninth. So hopefully that will go on. So best of luck for that one. And okay, so standing item, next portion, okay. Do we have any non-agenda items or comments? So that means you have something?
Okay. Yeah.
A general question for staff. You know, we have these environmental checklists and the, the reports and all this. I'm wondering, is that a huge load for staff or the developer? I mean, there are many, many pages, but it looks like it's kind of a boilerplate format. I mean, in high tech, we had things like reliability analyses that were big reports with a lot of data, but you know, there were consultants who did that and they did it very efficiently. I'm just wondering, is that a big load for staff or for the developers?
Not for the developers. We actually have an on-call environmental consultant list that we use. The developer pays for them. But they have the process down per SEQA and there's new streamlining efforts that are coming out from the state to try to simplify things more.
Thanks.
So anyway, so the meeting, it's, oh, staff has to say, oh yeah, the standing items are like, what is this one? Staff, do you have any non? Do you have any non-agenda items or comments?
Just a reminder that the city council priority setting meeting will be February twenty sixth and that's when we'll go through the whole new process.
Thank you. Anything else? I am not left leaving anything. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty six P M.